Good evening and welcome, everybody, and happy new year to all of you. It is Tuesday, January 2, 2019 at 7:00 PM, and I'm calling this meeting the Common Council of the City of Wausau to order. We'll begin tonight's proceedings with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Begin voting for roll call purposes. We have nine members present.
To begin with, I have two proclamations, and this first one I'm particularly very happy and very honored to announce. This is a city proclamation for Martin Luther King Jr. Day, 2019. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life to advancing equality, social justice, and opportunity for all, and challenged all Americans to participate in the never-ending work of building a more perfect union, and Dr. King's teachings can continue to guide and inspire us in addressing challenges in our communities. And the King Holiday and Service Act enacted in 1994 designated the King Holiday as a national day of volunteer service and charged a corporation for national and community service with leading this effort. And since 1994, millions of Americans have been inspired by the life and the work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. to serve their neighbors and communities on the King Holiday. And serving on the King Holiday is an appropriate way to honor Dr. King, meet local and national needs, bring our citizens together, and strengthen our communities and our nation. And the King Day of Service is the only federal holiday commemorated as a national day of service and offers an opportunity for Americans to give back to their communities on the holiday and make an ongoing commitment to service throughout the year. And the King Day of Service projects are being organized by a wide range of nonprofit and community organizations, educational institutions, public agencies, private businesses, and other organizations across the nation. And each of us can and must contribute to making our communities better with increased opportunity for all our citizens. And citizens of the City of Wausau have the opportunity to participate in events throughout our city, as well as create and implement community service projects where they identify the need. Now, therefore, I, Robert B. Melkey, Mayor of the incredible City of Wausau, proclaim the Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday as a day of service here in Wausau and call upon the people of the City of Wausau to pay tribute to the life and works of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. through participation in community service projects on Martin Luther King Day and throughout the year. Then our second proclamation. It's for School Choice Week. Whereas all children in the City of Wausau should have access to the highest quality education possible, and the City of Wausau recognizes the important role that effective education plays in preparing all students in the City of Wausau to be successful adults. And quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of Wausau, and Wausau is home to a multitude of high-quality public and non-public schools from which parents can choose for their children, in addition to families who educate their children in their home. An educational variety not only helps diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community, and Wausau has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children. And School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options. Now, therefore, I, Robert Melkey, do hereby proclaim January 20th through 26th, 2019, as Wausau School Choice Week, and I call this observance to the attention of all our And now, at this time, we have four different residents that have asked to come forward to speak for public. We will start with Mr. Laverne Platinco, please. And when all of you come forward, if you could, please state your name and address, and please try to limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Laverne Platinco, 810 Adams, Wausau, Wisconsin. My children and friends over the holidays discovered a little park behind the YMCA was gone. And they asked me, and I hadn't noticed it either, but many, many years ago, much like Henry Phillips donated Marathon Park to never be touched, except to be kept for the benefit of the people of Marathon County. We were told a long time ago, the person or group that gave that park to the YMCA, when they built that first building, they could not eliminate the park. Now, a lot of people are starting to ask questions, a lot of rumors. I think it would benefit Aspiris and the City of Wausau to give an explanation if, what, when, where, why. There are a lot of people that love that park. I know I sat there, ate my lunch, watched them, chased them around. It's something I would ask for the record to let the people know, why, when, where, how. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Sang Yang. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Sang Yang. I live on 113 Edward Street, and I'm here in support of the tavern on 316 Sherman Street. All right. Good evening. We are here to represent my Yang family. Many of you sitting on the council, like my family and I, share great love for the community, or the City of Wausau, aspire to be part of its future growth economically. My parents fled the country of Laos, and resold into U.S. political refugees, as U.S. political refugees. In 1993, my family moved here to Wausau in hopes to live an American dream, like many Hmong families at the time. As a matter of fact, I spent a lot of my childhood, I spent a lot of my childhood and was raised on North Second Avenue with many friends and family of whom I still share relationships and conversations with today. Being raised in a loving, hard-working home, with a first generation of refugees who were farmers of their homeland, we were taught self-reliant and hard-working. Our family and my parents, for many years, started their own business ventures, from selling Hmong-inspired art and crafts at vendors, at Hmong festivals, and special events like the Second Annual Wausau Festival all over the Midwest. Our family, in our hopes, oh, in the last couple of decades, were local farmers planting, cultivating, and harvesting fresh local produce in the central Wisconsin and setting up vendor booths at the local farmer's market. These businesses help support our family and continue dreams to grow as business owners. Those traits were brought in, oh, that was cutting out, those traits were brought in our family as children, and the main reasons why I'm here tonight, my family and I are interested in the property of 316 Sherman Street, currently owned by Chung Su Heh, owner of the Wausau World Market. Chung Su and we have a conversation about the future of the world market. We shared with him our hopes and dreams, and he is a businessman who is humble and supportive of building a future, and building future entrepreneurs. We believe in helping others fulfill their dreams, as he and his wife has. This tavern business will have so much more meaning to the surrounding communities other than just another bar business. Chung Su and we agreed that the tavern in the area would create more opportunities for him to sustain the world market project and help families fulfill our visions of another business opportunity. This would bring more revenue to both our businesses because the shared location, name recognition of the world market, and shared commitment to each other's dreams as business owners and as members of a close-knit Hmong community. That's all I have.
Right on time. Nice job, Sang. Thank you. To the second. Next up, please, is Mr. Tru Yang, please.
Thank you for having me. I'm Tru Yang. I currently reside at 1832 Norway Lane. Besides talking with the owner of the property, we have received feedback from the people who live and work in Wausau on how to attract young professionals, especially young Hmong professionals. Many of the people that we have had conversations with wish there were more things to do that catered to them, particularly Hmong music events. This facility can help promote Wausau as embracing diversity, keeping local money local, and building community space, and building a community culture. We understand that there are some challenges and concerns faced by our business vision, and we wish to address them carefully with the city council tonight. We want to acknowledge these, we want to acknowledge those who came to speak against our plan during the planning committee. Their concerns are our concerns, and we respect their feedback. First, there were concerns about the tavern bringing increased drug and drug traffic into the neighborhood. We know these issues stem from items greater than another tavern opening. It involves a community being able to provide living wages, affordable housing, a strong educational system, our incarceration rates, available wraparound services with mental health, and so much more. A business like what we would like to pursue, whether approved or not, will not solve this crisis. Secondly, there were concerns about the parking along Sherman Street, and through an agreement with the Wausau World Market, all of our patrons will enter through the north entrance, sharing the main parking lot with the Wausau World Market, private and away from neighboring homes. Thirdly, concerns that there were children in the area who did not need to be within that tavern environment. There are multiple bars with children living in the area, and once again, we assure you the southern entrance is strictly employee parking only, and all activity related to the facility will be in the world market parking lot. Also, one of our first improvements that we wish to improve on would be to soundproof the bar as much as we can to reduce that noise level for anyone or any neighbors. Lastly, we want to address that 95% of the signatures collected through the petition are particularly from District 9 and 10. Furthermore, we plan to have an open door policy with full cooperation with the Wausau Police Department, and our business will have zero tolerance for violence and crimes. We want to be able to create a safe environment for everyone. As engaged and active citizens and constituents of this community, we want to be able to inspire those who have a business mindset that the City of Wausau opens its doors of economic prosperity to all. There are resources out there that are willing to help dreamers like my family, such as MacDefco, the Hmong Chamber, and the Wausau Business Incubator. Governor Scott Walker approved a $100,000 minority business grant to MacDefco as custodians earlier this year. We want to be able to leverage these resources to help our family accomplish our dream. We want to see the Wausau World Market survive. We feel like we are addressing the concerns of some of our citizens. We ask the council to consider our request and approve the rezoning of this property tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, Mr. Romi Wagner.
Hello, everyone. Romi Wagner, 3500 Gulfview Drive, Wausau, Wisconsin. Thanks for giving me some time. And Tony, if you would give me a 245 flag, that would be good, because, you know, I just ramble on and on. First off, having sat in your chairs for quite some time, I always felt that I was not only the spokesperson for my community, but I was the information gatherer. I used my eyes and my ears to collect information. I used the gray matter filter in my brain to add common sense, knowledge, and information in order to have my mouth speak for my constituents and for the city. I believe I'm on record as saying that I was against some of the things we did. However, I said in a ballot box, I voted no for the wheel tax. But sitting in one of your chairs, I knew it was the only alternative that we would have had and needed, so I would have voted for the wheel tax with the Common Council. We have had things in the past that were difficult decisions. The warming house on Third Avenue comes to mind, and it has proven to be a wonderful addition for the community, well-managed by the Catholic Charities people. I enjoy going there and talking to the people that are committed, they're wonderful people for the neighborhood. We brought on the garbage collection change. Yes, we said to save $800,000, put in the recycling bins. I was disgusted that every day of the week, somewhere in our community, one-fifth of it looked like a desolate slum garbage bag trash house. But, boy, those containers, we voted them in, and it has cleaned up every neighborhood. It looks great. We have made tough decisions. You make tough decisions. And getting to that, I would challenge you that you have to stand up for the people who are standing up for the community. There is no one that I can think of that more embodies cleaning up neighborhoods, working for economic development and things than Chung Su Heh and the Wausau World Market. That is a family that didn't put in a few thousand dollars or a few percent of their worth in order to change a neighborhood. They threw their lifestyle, their commitment, out on the table and started converting that neighborhood. He is a man of integrity. It's a family of integrity, and they've done a lot for the community, not just the Hmong community. They've done a lot for the community, bought up old houses there, cleaned up the area, built a nice building. They offer opportunities for people to start businesses, as I helped them do that. I think this is a time not to just consider what wants to be done. Yes, it's the term tavern, but it seems they can address everything that are concerns, but it's the who is going to be involved. And Chung Su Heh, I believe, has proven to the City of Wausau that he holds his tenants and his values higher than what our conditions are. So give Chung Su a chance to rent, to get some people in there to help clean up that neighborhood. The Hmong community needs it, sorry, I went over, the Hmong community needs it, but the City of Wausau needs it, too. This is a man that has always had his commitment to make wherever he is better for everyone than it was when he got there. So I hope that you vote in favor and give him a chance to do what's right there to help build his business. Thanks, sorry.
Thank you. All right then, moving on to further council business. As far as the consent agenda, starting with file number 18-1201 from the council, the minutes of the previous meeting from December 11th, 2018, and ending with file number 18-0108 from Public Health and Safety, a resolution approving or denying various licenses as indicated. I'll entertain a motion to accept consent agenda. Mr. Neal, thank you. Do I have a second? By Mr. Peckham.
Begin voting. Motion has passed unanimously.
Moving on to the resolutions and ordinances, starting with file number 19-0101, mayor's appointments, there are none at this time. Moving on to file number 16-0913 from the Capitol Improvements and Street Maintenance Committee, accepting the transfer of city property for the reconstruction of South First Avenue pursuant to Transportation Project Plan 6999-1803, parcel 78, excuse me, 401 South First Avenue. Committee action approved 3 to 0. The fiscal impact is none. I'll entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Mr. Gisselman. Do I have a second? By Ms. Herbst, thank you.
Begin voting. That motion has passed 8 to 1.
File 14-1009, a resolution on the Finance Committee approving a non-exclusive contract for cellular services with NewCell Incorporated, CellCom. Committee action approved 5 to 0. The fiscal impact will be approximately $38,000 annually. I'll entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Mr. Martins, second by Mr. Neal. Mrs. Tao.
And I have a question about page 2. It's sub D, section, wait, sub D, sub 2, under early termination of lines in effect of non-renewal of agreement. And under section 2, where you have initialed, I highlighted that if the contract is not renewed and devices within that last 90 days, if they were activated, does that mean, like the last 10 devices, let's say I activated 10 devices this month, and the contract expires, and we don't renew by the end of first quarter, does that mean the city will be paying 175 per standard device and the smart?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep, you've got it exactly right.
So it's not for all the devices that we have active, just the last 90 days?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. You may begin voting. Motion has passed unanimously.
File number 02-1005, a resolution on the Finance Committee approving acquisition of 241 East Thomas Street. Committee action approved 4 to 0. Fiscal impact is $49,000. I'll entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Mr. Nutting. Second by Mr. Peckham.
Begin voting. Motion has passed 7 to 2.
File number 19-0106, a resolution of the Plan Commission, amending the general development plan and precise implementation plan at 1314 Grand Avenue to allow for a single-family residential property in a UDD Unified Development District. Committee action approved 6 to 0. The fiscal impact will be none. Entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Mr. Gisselman. Do I have a second? By Ms. Herbst.
Begin voting. Motion has passed unanimously.
File number 18-0905, a resolution of the Plan Commission approving a conditional use at 212 East Randolph Street and 1409 Cherry Street to allow for the VFW clubhouse uses in an M1 Limited Industrial District. Committee action approved 6 to 0. The fiscal impact will be none. Entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Mr. Gisselman, second by Mrs. Rasmussen.
Begin voting. That motion has passed unanimously.
File number 15-0709, a resolution of the Plan Commission, amending the general development plan and precise implementation plan at 316 Sherman Street to allow for a tavern in a UDD Unified Development District. Committee action, it failed a 1 to 5. The fiscal impact will be none. Entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Mr. Neal, second by Mr. Peckham. Mrs. Rasmussen.
Thank you. I agree with Mr. Wagner on one of the things that he'd said tonight, and that was that the contributions that Chung Su Heh, in terms of business development and sound management, have made to the city can't be understated. But I will differ with him in saying that when we talk about zoning and licensing, neighborhood impact is key, and that's what matters most. And we need occupancies that dovetail well in residential areas, and this is about, one of the things that we consider when we license taverns, is we look at alcohol outlet density and alcohol outlet concentration. And that's how many establishments selling alcohol, either Class B or retail Class A, exist in a radius. And if there's too many, you can have a negative neighborhood impact. Now, this particular area has had a very negative neighborhood impact twice in recent history. We have had to close taverns in that area that were creating a negative neighborhood impact where people were ready to leave the area because things were so bad. And yes, that was largely about the behavior of the management and the management style of the occupants, but that said, Mr. Heh isn't the manager of this proposed establishment. He's a landlord. And his level of influence, I think, in a situation like that, has a top end. And I think where the rubber meets the road is we need to take a look at how many alcohol dispensing outlets we want in the community and in that area where we are finally starting to see a positive impact from those closures. And, you know, this is just the zoning to allow the occupancy, it's not the licensing. The licensing is a totally separate decision, and that's even assuming that we have a license available at the time. But I think that this area, in terms of alcohol outlet proximity, already has enough, and it's actually borderline on too much. And when we look at, you know, what it costs us to manage the negative neighborhood impacts that result when we have too much of that in an area, it's expensive for the Wausau taxpayer, it draws a ton of services from the police department, the Public Health and Safety Committee has had to deal with it time and again, and, you know, need I remind us about Icy Willys, Breakaway, Paradox, It's Our Clubhouse, and Mountain Lanes? That is not a proud list that the Public Health and Safety Committee has had to deal with, and every single one of them closed because they were creating an adverse neighborhood impact where people couldn't stand one more day of what was happening there. And we're finally starting to see that positive turnaround, and I think there are other business occupancies that would be fantastic for 316 Sherman. And I think Mr. Heh is the person to find them, because he's innovative and he's got vision, and I think there's many other occupancies that he could facilitate in that building other than a tavern that would create a far more positive outcome. And I think the Plan Commission was right in opposing the zoning for this. This does not coexist well in a neighborhood. And, you know, even if this zoning were to pass, the Liquor License Review Subcommittee and the Public Health and Safety Committee have to look at neighborhood impact and density and concentration, and this just does not fit a healthy mix in that area. And in addition to that, in addition to the taverns we've closed, we've had requests for additional patrol at rocks. We've had trouble, it sidetracked. Subsequently, we've had some trouble at M&amp;R Station, but the owners have turned things around. And so it's not about the clientele, it's not about the music, it's not about the management. It's all of those things together and more, and it's how these things exist together, and this is not a good fit. We should not be zoning this building for a tavern, because there's a dozen other things that would be better suited there to coexist with those homes. Thank you.
Mr. Neal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, when I first read this resolution and saw the 1 to 5 vote, I was kind of disturbed by that, because, you know, I'm not a big fan of predicting doom and gloom future based on what might have happened here or might have happened there. I can point to too many instances in our town where a quote, neighborhood tavern is a longtime member of a neighborhood in good standing. I could talk about the Domino. I can talk about the B&amp;R Bar across the street from an elementary school. It's a question of what do you do with your business? If your business is legal and you have a right to petition to have that business, and if you are awarded that business, how do you conduct yourself? Yes, we've seen instances where people did not conduct themselves like we'd like, and those businesses have gone by the wayside. Others have found a way to do it right. Not only that, but I see this proposed business as something special that fulfills a purpose that I think has been eloquently explained to us by the petitioners, and I don't think it's right for us to stand in the way of this based on what I will, again, call doom and gloom predictions rather than proven track record on the part of the petitioners. And I see this as a potential good for the neighborhood. I agree with Mr. Wagner, and I will support this. Thank you.
Mr. Gisselman.
As a member of the Plan Commission, I voted against this. As you note in the minutes, I feel that this neighborhood, echoing what Lisa said with regard to this neighborhood, I've seen a lot of stress sitting on my years at Public Health and Safety. We've certainly seen a lot of trials with regard to this neighborhood, and I think at this point in time, I think it is still coming, the neighborhood is coming off of a lot of that stress, and I think that at this point in time, I think it's just too early, too early to... to maneuver a tavern into this, into this neighborhood. I, I, that's pretty much where I was with regard to the, the Plan Commission, and I, and I still feel that at this point in time, I don't think a tavern really belongs there in that neighborhood. Let us have some quiet in that neighborhood, build it up, and see where we go. But that's where I am today. Thank you.
Mr. Peckham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was the one yes vote on this, that plan, and I've kind of vacillated on it. I didn't cast that one yes vote with 100% conviction, but I thought that there should be some consideration given to this applicant. And after the vote, I thought, well, we kind of probably did the right thing. You know, it's jammed into that neighborhood, man, he needs to find a different spot. But after looking at the information in the packet, the rather eloquent statement by the applicant, the number of signatures that were gathered in a heartfelt effort to make this fly, and the idea, well, that convinced me that the applicant will work as hard to keep this open and thriving and operating appropriately as he has in trying to get this over the hump tonight. But also the idea that the business would be oriented to the north into the parking lot of the Wassa World Market, I think makes a big difference. And all this going to be happening on Sherman Street is employee parking, so that can be relatively quiet. And so, especially with his promise to do soundproofing and efforts there, I think that we should give this a shot, and I will be supporting it.
Mrs. Tao.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to share that, you know, representing the neighboring district and the way how the districts are drawn out, I have a huge invested responsibility in, in this district. And I want to share with all of you that it is quite humiliating to hear that this area is full of distress, whether the letters I received about how there's a culture of decay that would be, that would be the outcome of an opportunity like a tavern going into 316 Sherman Street. I've had conversations in the last three, four years with Chung Su and his family, and I want to share some facts with all of you, is that the Hmong community, and I can speak to the Hmong professionals that are in the room today because I know some of them, when we come together and have conversations about our dreams and goals and what we really want to advocate for, we like to go to establishments or organizations where we feel comfortable. Oftentimes, you might see us having discussions about things that maybe happened in the city of Wassa, or maybe decisions that the Wassa PD has made. We've met at the Wassa World Market, had lunch, brought people to understand different cultures that are available in our community. We also attend after meetings at Christine's Bar Restaurant so that we can reconvene and debrief and talk about things that matter to us. It's close. I want to share with all of you that District 10 has some opportunities, but so does every other district within our city. We talk about taverns or bars being the density or the location being around residential area where there are children. Well, I can probably name you about 25 taverns that are right next to residential, which we don't have a concern with. And I want to share a little bit more with all of you that the Wassa World Market was a partnership, an investment made by the city of Wassa, by McDefco, by other gap funders that are available in the community for Chung Su and his family. We cannot allow this, this over one and a half million dollar project to fail. If you're asking Chung Su to be innovative, he is being innovative. That property at 316 has been vacant for the last three years when they vacated that property and moved their grocery store into the world market. They own that piece of property. That is part of the agreement with the funding they received to improve and implement the Wassa World Market. I'm asking all of you, we've, I know Christian Chock, you're in the room here. I've heard from Vicki Resek who talked about opportunities that Chung Su and his wife can do to better manage and improve the world market to where it needs to be. There's been creative ways that we put in place to support Chung Su and his family that maybe I shouldn't disclose here. But if you need that information, I know Christian has access to that information, so does McDefco. I'm here to say that Chung Su is a hardworking man. He's, he's been the model for many Hmong American citizens who want to be entrepreneurs. I've worked with him. I've been one of his clients hosting my business from the Twin Cities here as a concept in the city of Wassa. He's given me opportunities. And I think that the Mr. Yangs here have addressed, they've talked to citizens, they've heard loud and clear about the concerns, and I think that they've made some adjustments. I think that they're willing to work and partner with the city, with the, the police department, based on what I've heard, and I think that we should give them an opportunity. I don't think we should take a baseline of what prior business owners have done to mismanage their businesses. I think that we should give everybody an opportunity, and we shouldn't base it upon past history. And one of the bars that Lisa Rasmussen named was a brother-in-law of mine that owned that business. And we understand where he is at today with the decisions that he has made. He has lost everything, and I can go on record to say that, but I'm not afraid and ashamed to say that. But I think that we should give this young family, who, this isn't their first time being a business owner. You know what? They've been growers. They've been contributing to the economy here in Wassa, and they want to continue to do so. So I hope that you consider all these facts, and there's so much more, and I hope that you, you would support their decision. And the obstacles about obtaining a retail liquor license or a Class B liquor license, I, I think that's the next step for them, that they would have to go to the right committees to apply and see how things unfold. So I think we should give them an opportunity like how we give everyone else an opportunity. And in closing, I know I've taken about 10 minutes, I apologize. We didn't blink an eye when the VFW came in wanting to buy the 316 Sherman Street property, but due to whatever negotiating efforts that happened, it didn't go, it didn't go through. And so I hope that all of you consider that if we're able to give others an opportunity for the same location, maybe for a different type of business, I think that we should, we shouldn't set a double standard here. Thank you.
Mr. Martins.
Thank you, Mayor. Much of what I was going to say was already echoed by Ms. Tao, so thanks for bringing that forward first. But basically, what I was going to say is that, you know, I'm really impressed by Tru Yang's letter here and the depth of his petition of support for the rezoning. It's, there is a wide neighborhood support for this establishment. I think it's going to be very synergistic to the world market. And that, and I, I see it as, really as, as a win-win situation, and I, I think it will be a positive influence for the, for the community at whole, like Mr. Wagner said earlier in his public comment. And just, just to echo what Alder Tao said is, yeah, not less than five months ago, we did look at this exact parcel and wanting to rezone it for, for the use as a clubhouse by the VFW. And it's, I, I totally agree, this, you know, voting against this resolution would be a double standard.
Mr. Nutting.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a very difficult decision for me to make as the representative of Third District, the district which hosts the world market, which I wholeheartedly supported and am also a, a customer. We've sat through all of these discussions, and I agree with comments made by every one of the commentees. The stalling point here for me is the location. The family's integrity to see this project through and to put it in place and to watch over it would be great at a different location, but in this neighborhood, the residents that have contacted me, my residents of the Third District, are not in favor of this location having a tavern. I'm not against the fact that there would be a tavern in a different location, which would be more conducive to it. We've worked hard to care for the area and improve it, and it is improving, and I agree, Ms. Tao, that the area is a very nice place to live. I've lived there over 30 years myself. I don't believe that a, an establishment that conduces this, this, this behavior, which inevitably will lend to somebody driving out that driveway onto Third Avenue drunk and breaking the law and endangering other people's lives, is the right thing to do. So for that reason, I will vote against this, for this location. Find another location and may approve it.
Mrs. Rasmussen.
Thank you. I guess I want to try to just bring us back to center a little bit in our discussion because we need to, I guess, keep sight of what the issue really is here. And I want to be absolutely clear, this is not a cultural issue. This is an alcohol issue. This is a question about whether Wassa needs another tavern in a residential area, in this residential area. And the fact is, is that it's as easy to buy alcohol in this town as coffee. And is that where we want to be? That, that's the question we have to ask ourselves. It's not about whether or not Chung Su is a great landlord. We know he is regardless of what the occupancy is. But at the end of the day, is there a positive neighborhood impact to be had by this occupancy? And saying no to this type of zoning request and whether or not it dovetails with the neighborhood creates absolutely no double standard. It's all about whether or not this is the right place for that operation. And I don't feel it is. Based on the way it's positioned and the experience we've had, you can't negate the things that have happened in the past because they've had an adverse impact on a neighborhood and the people who live there. And we've worked hard, and we've spent an awful lot of time and money fixing stuff like that. And we also support Chung Su and the Wassa World Market. And I find it hard to believe that the world market would fail if this building doesn't become a tavern. Yes, that building needs to become something. He needs something in there to generate income and pay the taxes. I get that. It needs an occupancy, or he needs to be able to sell it, whatever. But this is not the right thing in that neighborhood at this time in, in terms of alcohol outlet density. It's not about culture. It's about alcohol and how much of it we want flowing in that area. And that's the, that's the reason I can't support it, and I will not.
Mrs. Tao.
I, I want to remind all of you that in the last six months, we've rezoned and approved the Masonic Building. The Urban Bistro that will be at the West Side Battery Place, that's in your district, Alder Nutting. And I wonder if that's going to get approved, or how you will feel about that when that comes back up. I believe we have an economic development training opportunity that's going to talk about the West Side Battery Building. And I also want to remind us that the Hiawatha Restaurant and Bar, they just renewed their license, and they're in a residential area. So is the West Side Battery Place that's positioned for Urban Bistro. And they're going to put a microbrewery into that building, at least that's what I've heard through hearsay. I don't know if that's true. So when I think about the comments, and I want to do some level-setting here too, because these opportunities that we voted on, I mean, we, we didn't go into deep discussion like this at all. I, I don't recall. So I, I want to draw that out for some of you, that why was it okay for us to renew Hiawatha? And they're in a residential area. And I can probably name maybe three other taverns that are within proximity to Hiawatha. And then the Masonic Building wanted to transition that into whatever they're going to plan in, in the coming, you know, like, season, right? So we never took this type of time to talk through things. So help me understand how we can approve those three opportunities, but not this one. And I would encourage the City Council, you should talk to Christian Chock about those taxes that you refer to that should be paid. I think that there's a lot more to what's happening at the world market that you probably don't know. And I encouraged Pat Peckham the same thing when we talked at the Transit Committee meeting. I think there's, there are things that are struggling, maybe all of you are not aware of, and I really think that we, that, that he is being innovative, he is being creative, he's opening up opportunities for a young entrepreneur and their family to, to really come in and build value for, for the city. And so don't, don't ignore that for some of you, and don't ignore the facts of what we voted on in the last six to nine months for other opportunities. Because you're, you're, all the comments that I've heard tonight that's against it, you are setting the example that we, we make certain votes for certain opportunities. And it's been very clear tonight. I don't mean to draw that out that way, but it's starting to sound that way. Help me understand how the other three were approved and why not this one.
Mr. Neal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very briefly, and with all due respect, I just, I do see that there's a, a cultural consideration here that we should not overlook. You know, all things are not equal when you look at, you know, the, the subject matter we're talking about. There are other extenuating circumstances which I think should be considered. There is a cultural consideration here that we should take into account as we vote. You know, I see this proposed business as an adjunct to, to the world market. And as Alder Tao mentioned, it would have its purpose to fulfill a certain desire as a cultural outlet, a place for people to, you know, convene, you know, talk about stuff, you know, whatever. I don't see this as, as another, you know, motorcycle hangout, you know, on Third Avenue or something. It does, to me, seem to be something potentially special and something that, as I said, an adjunct to a larger business right next door to it, facing it, sharing the same parking lot, and sharing interests. I, I don't think that we should oppose this. Even the people tonight that have spoken out against it on council, I think you should maybe sit back and really think a little bit deeper about this and support it on a deeper level than maybe it's being considered right now. I fully support this, and I'd be a little bit disappointed if, if we don't. Thank you.
All right. With no further comment, we have a motion by Neal, second by Peckham, and you may begin That motion has failed four to five.
Moving on, as far as suspending the rule number one on Section D, change admission of committee business to council for the items marked pending committee action, two-thirds vote will be required. Entertain a motion to accept so that we can move forward. Mr. Nutting, second by Mr. Gisselman.
Begin voting, please. Motion has passed unanimously.
File number 97-0712, a resolution of the Finance Committee approving the city's waiver of the right to repurchase property at 401 and 505 North 72nd Avenue in the Wassa Business Campus. Committee action approved four to zero. The fiscal impact will be none. I'll entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Mrs. Rasmussen, second by Ms. Herbst.
Begin voting. Begin voting. Motion has passed nine to zero.
File number 02-1005, a resolution of the Finance Committee approving jurisdictional offer to the owner of 114 East Thomas Street by publication for Phase Two of the Thomas Street Reconstruction Project. Committee action approved four to zero. The fiscal impact will be $1,000. I'll entertain a motion to move it forward. Motion by Mr. Nutting, second by Mr. Smith.
Begin voting. Whoops, excuse me. Mr. Nutting, did you want to speak? Okay. Let's try it and see if it works, otherwise we might have to, actually, let's just end it, because I think we have to do it again. So now you may begin voting. Sometimes when that request to speak is on, it doesn't work. That motion has passed seven to two.
File number 02-1005, a resolution of the Finance Committee approving jurisdictional offer to the owner of 218 East Thomas Street by publication for Phase Two of the Thomas Street Reconstruction Project. Committee action approved four to zero. The fiscal impact will be $28,300. Entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Ms. Herbst, second by Ms. Rasmussen.
That motion has passed seven to two.
File number 14-0707 from the Finance Committee, a resolution of the Finance Committee for jurisdictional offers for properties for the Townline Road Reconstruction Project, Parcel One at 1225 Grand Avenue, Parcel Two at 1228 Prospect Avenue, Parcel Three at 702 Townline Road, Parcel Six at 714 Townline Road, Parcel Fourteen at 1303 Grand Avenue, Parcel Forty Seven at 1204 Townline Road, and Parcel Fifty One at 915 Townline Road. Fiscal impact will be $2,650. Mr. Peckham.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was too excited to get you on there. Can we have a first and a second?
Sorry. I would move to approve. Motion by Mr. Peckham, second by Mr. Martins.
Okay, go ahead.
Now do I get to talk?
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Thank you. I just had a question. I thought it was odd that so many of these property owners didn't respond and were having to, you know, boom, 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 right in a row, all these people. Is there a...
Mr. Lemon, you want to come forward and explain the situation, please? Thank you.
Maybe it was, this is worth peanuts, so just let it slide, or...
Yeah, you know, this is partially funded by the DOT, so we're following Wisconsin state statutes on property acquisition. These are mainly temporary limited easements, so we can put the sidewalk in, we can grade back. So we're, most of these were not taking any property, we're just temporarily using it for the road construction project and grading. But for whatever reason, these owners did not respond to us. We could not get a hold of them, and they weren't interested in signing for the small amount. So this was the next step in order to keep the project moving forward. Mm-hmm.
We have a motion by Peckham, second by Martins. You may begin voting. That motion has passed unanimously.
File number 14-0707, a resolution of the Finance Committee approving jurisdictional offer process to the owner of 917 and 929 Townline Road. Committee action approved four to zero. The fiscal impact will be $100,000. I'll entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Ms. Herbst, second by Mr. Peckham.
That motion has passed unanimously.
File number 18-0608, a resolution of the Finance Committee approving the jurisdictional offer process to the owner of 926 South First Avenue. Committee action approved four to zero. The fiscal impact will be $200. Motion by Mr. Nutting. Do I have a second? By Mrs. Rasmussen.
That motion has passed eight to one.
And at this time, I'd like to invite anybody to come forward out in the audience, if you have an issue or want to make public comment on anything coming on for tonight's agenda or anything with the city, now is your chance. If anybody would like to come forward and speak on a matter, please do so. And one more time, would anybody like to come forward and speak on an issue? And if you could, please, state your name and your address, and Lemon, your comments, three minutes, please. Judith, thank you.
I shall. Hi. Judith Miller, 903 Kick Bush Street, Wausau. I feel obliged to say this, after some discussion yesterday at a neighborhood meeting, if one person in a group has a problem, you all have a problem. You can say that it's a matter of perception, and it is. I would ask, how this body, if one person within this body will not go into closed session with you, how can this body then appear to be legitimate when a vote is taken? Because that person has been excluded from that information. While it may have been by that person's choice to do so, I would say there is a problem, and I'm afraid it's being discussed by citizens of this community, it is being discussed by various organizations. I understand you have had offers for diversity training, mediation, et cetera, et cetera, at no charge from various nonprofits. I would seriously urge you to consider accepting those offers. After all, what will diversity training hurt? What will mediation hurt? Nothing, I suspect. But again, it is being widely spoken of with concern and with dismay. I would ask you, please, to consider some form of intervention in this matter, some form of remediating it, whether or not you think there is a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. I have somebody offered a volunteer to read the closed session, please.
I'll read it. I'll make a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to Chapter 19.85, Paragraph One Sub E of the Wisconsin statutes for deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, and pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, Paragraph One Sub G, for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel regarding selection from proposals received for the Riverlife Villages Phase One project of a new developer and approval of lien settlements to restart the project.
I have a second by Mr. Neal, thank you. Mr. Gisselman.
Can I ask, as we go into closed session, what, as the later part would be to reconvene into open session, can I ask, at this point in time, what materials, what will be made available in the open session so that the citizens can, besides just a motion to do this or that, I think that, unless we don't have an answer, but I'm thinking that there should be some way, because this is a very large issue for the community, and I think that we should be making as much information available to the community and citizens of Wausau as possible, and I'm just, you know, I'm asking and sort of asking that as much information as we can be made available, rather than just the motion as, or a motion as such, so, and, or whoever. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Gisselman, that's a good question, and we will distribute in closed session, expecting that if we do reconvene into open session and take action on the items that are in there, we do have a resolution prepared for your consideration that we will distribute, which, if voted on in open session, would then be made public, along with all of the settlement agreements, if approved by you, and the term sheet for the development agreement. So we have those all prepared tonight to share with you in closed session, and if approved in open session, those would be open for public inspection at that point. You're welcome.
We have a motion by Rasmussen, and I think my system just quit, maybe not. We have a motion by Rasmussen, a second by Neal, and you may begin voting. Yep, it totally stopped. Well, I think we're going to do this, oh, nope, it's gone. A roll call vote. We always have a backup plan here. So for closed session, we had a motion by Rasmussen, and Neal was the second. Okay, this is to move into closed session. Let's see here, Rasmussen, Neal. All right, so I'm going to still do a roll call vote. I'll start with you, Mr. Peckham. Mr. Martins. Mr. Nutting.
Hi.
Mr. Neal.
Hi.
Mr. Gisselman.
Hi.
Ms. Rasmussen.
Hi.
Ms. Kalbach. Oops, she's not here. Ms. Herbst.
Hi.
Ms. Tao.
No.
Mr. Smith.
Hi.
That motion has passed, what do I have, nine to one? And we'll go into closed session at 8:00 PM.
Thank you, everybody.
Always have a backup. It is way past my bedtime, that is certain. Okay.
When do I read back these parts?
And then, yeah, we're looking for a motion and a second to approve the resolution that is presented before the council. This would be a resolution of the common council.
I move to approve the resolution as presented.
I'll second.
Second, okay. And at this time, if I can, I want to read real quick, because Ms. McElhaney could not be here tonight.
And then after you do that, Mayor, maybe you should read the heading, Tony, of the resolutions for the viewing public, so they understand what the motion is. We all have the resolution in front of us, but it wasn't in the packet, so, thank you.
Real quick, I'll read the resolution of the common council, Acceptance of Proposal from Gorman and Company for Riverlife Villages Phase One Project, Approval of Settlement Agreements with Existing Contractors, Engineers, and Architects to Remove Leans and the Existing Developer, and Approval of Final Developmental Agreements and Ground Leases with Gorman and Company for the Restart of the Project. About to take a vote, the fiscal impact will be $2,740,000. I do have something from Ms. McElhaney, as she asked to be read in the public record. I will not be attending the City Council meeting tonight, January 8, 2019, for medical reasons. I therefore request the following comments be added to the record regarding both the Riverlife lien settlements and new developer votes scheduled for this evening. The Riverlife Development Phase One Project, including the city's participation of $2.74 million and choice of Franz as a developer, was decided in early 2016 by a former council. All subsequent votes regarding requests to change financial backers and finally default of the agreement with Franz due to work stoppage. The use and amount of public funds used for private developments are always debatable. Becky is known for being a conservative approach to both the city debt and using public funds in different development projects. However, she supports lien settlements to be paid by the city, used in part of the $2.74 million previously allocated for the Riverlife Phase One, due to the following reasons. Number one, the new developer, Gorman, will finish the project once the leans are satisfied, requiring no further city fund-up participation with this project. The cost of the leans is less than the $2.74 million of agreed city participation. Two, the development agreement with Gorman stipulates that the lien payments are considered a forgivable loan, which will be forgiven upon successful completion of this project, including hitting benchmarks of tax value. Three, the taxpayers are made whole with the $450,000 settlement with Barker Financial repaying the pre-development loan and other outlays paid by the city for this project. Four, Gorman has a proven track record of successful projects, both locally and statewide, has been vetted thoroughly by outside counsel, and believes this project will be successful. And five, the path of the city using previously allotted development funds to satisfy the liens gets the project restarted much faster than lengthy litigation with no guarantees of outcomes. The taxpayers' best interest is to get this project completed as quickly as possible, earning property tax. Mrs. Rasmussen.
Thank you. I think it's also important to recognize for the viewing public that this dollar figure that we're talking about here in terms of the agreement and settlement of the liens represents the city's original financial commitment to the project initially and does not inject new public money into the project. I think it's important that we're clear on that, and this then will unencumber the property and allow it to move forward in a positive way. So just so everyone's clear, this is not new funding.
Mr. Gisselman.
Just so that the media and, you know, will we be feeding the resolutions as passed this evening to the media either this evening or tomorrow morning, so that the media can get it this evening, if possible?
We can, and I've got a statement afterward.
Okay, thank you. Just making sure that the resolution will be made public as soon as possible.
Did you want the vote to be completed first? Okay. All right, you may begin voting. I want to make sure I have everybody in there. That motion has passed unanimously.
And I'll read this for the media and our residents. Tonight, the city authorized settlement payments to remove liens and selected a new developer, Gorman and Company, to take over the Riverlife Villages Phase One project. The settlements total no more than the original incentive approved for the project, and the previous developer, Barker Financial, will pay the city an amount which exceeds a full balance of their loan. We will be finalizing the development agreement, and any changes from the original approved plan with the developer soon. The project construction will be restarting this spring, with the completion for the first building in the spring of 2020. We will also continue to work with other interested parties for additional development in the Riverlife area, and will continue to review those potential projects as they And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. A motion by Mr. Neal, second by Mr. Peckham.
Begin voting. Did he want to say something? No, I guess not. Motion has passed unanimously.